Sorry to make us live.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, we are now live.
Great, thank you. State Board will come back to order. Thanks to all of you for attending this virtual meeting today. It's a special meeting. Ms. Maramba, would you be good enough to call the roll?
Board Member Durham.
Here.
Board Member Flores. Board Member Flores. I believe she's here. Board Member Goff. Board Member Goff.
There's Flores, okay.
Here, Shane.
Board Member McCollum.
I'm here.
Board Member Rankin. See her. Board Member Rankin, you're here.
And I'm here.
Yes, we got it.
Thank you, Board Member Flores. Board Member Shuffel.
Here.
Board Member Schroeder.
Here.
That is, you're all here. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. So the one and only item on the agenda is a presentation on the ESF REM grant. Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've got four ideas submitted to you, and I am going to turn this over. Both Ms. Maramba and Ms. Pearson have been organizing this for us, so I'm turning it over to them. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Angela's just gonna share her screen. We're gonna do a quick overview of the PowerPoint that we went through last week. I think now that you all have seen the ideas that came in, it may be helpful just to be refreshed on the requirements for this grant application. So we'll do that quickly. We'll do a very high-level summary of what is in those ideas, and then we're gonna turn it to you all for your conversation. So again, this is the Education Stabilization Fund, the Rethink K-12 Education Models Grant. It's coming from the U.S. Department of Education, and it's a discretionary competitive grant. So we can apply for it. We don't have to apply for it, but it's a competitive process. Angela, do you mind?
Thank you. There's approximately $180 million available. They are intending to award grants in the range of $5 million to $20 million. That's for a period of up to three years or 36 months, estimating about $15 million total for the awards. This is all where the U.S. Department of Ed had laid things out, and they're thinking about 13 to 14 awards in total with four awards under each absolute priority. That was their goal. I think, yes, that's all on that side. There were three absolute priorities that states could apply for. SEAs are the only eligible entity to apply for this grant, and we had to pick one of three. We can't do a combination. We had to pick one. So as we talked about last week, and as you all have been updated on and heard about, we selected absolute priority number three, which is field-initiated projects for educational models for remote learning to improve student outcome. So that's where we're landing, and that's the priority area that we're looking through these ideas for. A few other things just to remind you all of.
So number two doesn't have a chance, and number one doesn't have a chance?
Board Member Flores, are you talking about that on the previous slide, the absolute priorities, number one and number two?
Well, I'm trying to work from the slides that you had last time.
Yeah.
Because I can't see it, so I'm looking at the slides that I have.
And you're on slide on the third page, the one that's titled, "Projects Must Be in One of These Three Categories."
Yeah, I see it.
Yep, so the board selected focusing on number three, and that's what we asked for ideas on, was ideas specific to number three, that field-initiated projects.
Okay, so that's what you think? You don't think that number one and number two should be put together? I mean, that would serve training teachers, and that would also serve the most needed kids who... I mean, I'm really worried about those kids that don't have... That are not... That are having a hard time getting an education, the ones that are having problems with the technology or who are not learning from technology.
Dr. Flores, I thought that those specific... The grants you read, one through four, are all still eligible, but they're talking just about the categories of this grant that they decided to apply for, and then the four items you had in front are all still in play. Category.
Go ahead, Ms. Pearson.
Thank you.
The board has... I mean, the department has chosen three.
No, we chose three. Dr. Flores, the board chose three. We chose item three, and from item three, we received four proposals.
Okay. And so what I'm saying is, there's four different distinct proposals, and I think that combining number two, number one and number two...
Could we allow staff to finish their presentation? And then I promise, I will get to you to hear your...
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Ideas. Board Member... I mean, Ms. Pearson, could you continue, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Angela, do you mind? Thank you so much. So just some other information about the grant. Again, that first link has all the minute details about what's allowable or not. I think a really important point is that there's not sub-granting allowed with this grant. So any work that gets done outside of the department, the department is not allowed. If we receive the grant, we're not allowed to give grant money, flow the money through grants to other organizations. We can only do that through contracts, through a procurement process. And so just keep that in mind as you talk about some of the ideas that came forward, because we were trying to figure out how they could work when we're not allowed to use the funds to do any sub-granting. And then finally, just the last bullet to remember, that this grant must provide equitable access for non-public school students, the same access that public school students or staff would have access to. I think that's the high-level summary of what the requirements are for the grant. Angela's gonna remind you quickly of the application requirements of what we need to turn into the U.S. Department of Ed.
Okay, thanks, Alyssa. So just a reminder that there are six requirements in order for us to apply that would have to include a description of the state's approach to one of the three priorities, analysis of the immediate needs to support remote learning, and a description of how the proposed project will address those needs, a description of the state's coronavirus burden, an analysis of state assets and collaborative efforts to improve student outcomes during this national emergency, assurance that the state will provide information to the U.S. Department of Education for evaluations, and a letter of support from the governor. If we are awarded the grant, there are some performance measures that we must be able to report back to the United States Department of Education, and that would be the number of students served, the percent of parents who report satisfaction with remote learning options available, the number of different types of new remote learning options provided, and project-specific measures and targets set by the state. So just a quick reminder that when we did submit or send out the call for ideas, we asked for some materials to be submitted, and those were a two-to-three-page description of the approach to addressing priority number three, which would include an implementation plan and timeline for key grant activities, a one-page plan for how to assess the number of students served and parent satisfaction with the state's grant-related remote learning offerings, and the number of different types of new remote learning options provided in order to address the performance measures for the grant, a two-page analysis of the immediate needs in the state to support remote learning, and a description of how the proposed idea would address those needs. Then lastly, a one-page budget narrative that describes general projects, project costs and needs to be implemented by the idea. And then I'll turn it back over to Alyssa for the ideas that we received.
Thanks, Angela. So as you all saw, we received four ideas. We had you all review this as a blind review, just so you can just look purely at the idea that's behind it, because the organization that submits doesn't necessarily mean they'll do the work, because if we get the grant, we have to go through a procurement process anyway. So we just wanted to do this as a blind review, because it really, truly is just about the idea right now. The first idea that came through was about virtual professional learning support for teachers, a wide number of different ways to provide teachers with support in professional development, from residencies to conferences to study groups. So it's kind of broad there. Idea number two is Extended Learning Opportunity Grant Program for Remote Learning Collective. So this one really dug into ideas of what we can... What communities, schools, families could do in, out of school time. But this is where that requirement around the money going through a contract versus a grant is really important to keep in mind. Number three is building a comprehensive virtual coursework planning system over the next three years, and really thinking out how we can understand better courses and apprenticeships and work-based learning that's available for students across the state, both virtually and in person. And finally, idea number four was online educator capacity building, so really more focused PD with some online modules and then graduate courses for teachers across the state. We have the same information that you all do on the grants. We've read the ideas. We've read the ideas that came in. We have not taught to any of the organizations that submitted, so we don't have additional information than what you all do. But if you have questions, we can try and interpret what we read as well as you did. But we'll turn it back to you all now to think about where you would like to go with it.
Angelica, you're muted.
Thank you very much. So thank you for the refresher on the requirements. We'll go down the line, at which time you could provide comments, ask questions about the U.S. Department of Education grant requirements, and afterwards, we'll move to a conversation about the four ideas and try to rank them. So I'll start with Board Member Shuffel.
I had a question about the idea number two, where you said, Alyssa, that was a contract, not a grant. Can you clarify that one?
Sure. So let me pull up the language. When we read all those detailed links from the U.S. Department of Ed to really understand it, it said no sub-grantee allowed, and I haven't encountered that in a grant before, so I was a little confused. So we followed up with the U.S. Department of Ed, and what they wrote back was, "The ESF REM program prohibits awarding sub-grants to entities to directly carry out project activities described in its application. In all cases in which the eligible applicant proposes to pay another party for goods and services to carry out its grant, as opposed to delivering the goods and services itself, the applicant must describe how they propose to procure the goods and services needed to implement proposed project activity. Procurement transactions must be conducted in a manner providing full and open competition consistent with state procurement standards." They go on and on. So our understanding from what we've been able to get from the U.S. Department of Ed is that this money can't be granted out. It has to go out through procurement. So my understanding of number two was that you do a procurement process to have a nonprofit run the program, but then the nonprofit would take the grant funds and do sub-grants out from there. So I just... This is the information. We've been trying to get ahold of U.S. Department of Ed to get a little bit more information, but there's been some challenges in getting feedback back from them on that.
Okay. And then I had one more question. As far as redundancy, I was thinking about number four, where there... Is this okay if I ask this question, Madam Chair?
Yes, this is your time.
Anyway, is there redundancy with number four? It says, "An online educator capacity..." You know, like what's out there, kind of a database? I'm just thinking, as we think of these four, it seems like we don't want to fund something that's already kind of out there.
Absolutely. So number four is the professional development, like the online courses for educators. And that one's more... From what I've heard, there is higher demand for that than we may have capacity to fill, but I'm gonna let other people go in further detail if you want. Number three is the course cataloging or the course directory, and I don't believe we have anything like that in the state, is my understanding. It's been something that's been talked about for a lot of years as a need and something that would be useful, but I don't think it's been built to this point.
Okay. All right, great. Those were my two questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Goff? Mike? There's a gremlin who keeps turning us off.
Yeah.
We know who she is.
Sorry about that. I noticed Rebecca wrote a statement about her curiosity around the cost ranges. So I'm wondering if, without more of a rubric, which actually I'm not saying was a shortcoming, I actually made up my own a little bit, but I think that's a great question. Was there any guidance at all about budgeting or setting a budget, and even that in relation to the timeline they proposed? Because a couple of these... The timelines are... Well, they're based in the basic three-year span, but I was struck by the amount and type of work in idea number three in relation to that timeline. And so my head goes to where, is that's even possible? Practical, feasible? If we're going to stretch this out to the point of the grant will be over, right? These are not renewable, and I'm just curious about, mostly about the cost, and how any of these submitters went about their pricing of this. It's very curious. They range all over the place.
Angela, will you pull back up the slide of what we requested, and we can talk about just what we had put in there about budget? And then I think it's also important for you all to know that this is what the idea came in as. When we write it up, we can write in more detail. We can follow up. We can figure out scope per your direction on these a little bit more. If we select one and apply for it, that needs more detail. But on this slide, you can see what we requested. We said, "A one-page budget narrative that describes general project costs," and then my little bar is covering that, the rest of it. Angela, can you read that last sentence on there? Oh, there we go. "Costs and needs to implement the ideas." So you could interpret that in many different ways of how much detail and how much high level, but we got a range in there, for sure.
So the range went from $1 million to $20 million, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah.
That's right.
And $20 million was the maximum from the description from the feds? Is that correct, Angela? I thought that was somewhere in the federal stuff.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, $5 million to $20 million. Thank you. Thanks for that reminder. Go ahead, Board Member Goff.
Well, that's pretty much where I am at this point in time. I'm just gonna listen a little bit more into everyone else's reactions, and...
Sure.
I gotta say real quickly, at the last meeting, I was... Probably came across as being a little pessimistic about the ability of people to meet this short timeline, to submit these ideas. I'm very impressed. I mean, I'm not surprised. We're Colorado. We do great stuff. But I was really impressed with what came in, and the comprehensive nature of some of these is just incredible. And I wish we could do all four and had... Or had the ability to combine them into one major project. But go ahead. I will wait and see what everyone says.
I like your idea, combining.
Board Member Flores, I will get to you, or perhaps you should go ahead if you need to speak. Board Member Flores, go ahead.
Yeah, I think a combination of them would be really great, and I think we could bring it up to 20,000. I mean, remember what I thought about a charrette, where people get together and they just kind of... Maybe it's a one- or a two-day thing where you come up with the ideas and you write the whole thing, and I think it can be done. And I think these ideas are great if we combine them together. And I like number one, because I think teachers should be trained on using technology and on using, as well as knowing the, you know, our standards, and then getting those into a curricula. And... Or at least if they're gonna buy books, you need to know how that's gonna look. And so I'm excited that, you know, that all these were on the right track. Now, number three. Number three and number four. May I ask a question of Dr. Shuffel?
Sure.
Dr. Shuffel, why did you think that this was not appropriate or not on target?
No, I didn't say that. I was just asking if it was redundant to something that already exists. Number three is a taxonomy of all the courses that exist, so they'd be kind of a one-stop shop. People could look across the state, see what's out there, and I just wondered if it was already out there. That was all.
Yeah, and I think you're probably right. And they would just be kind of cataloging. And... But you're right.
I think what Alyssa said is that catalog is not out there, so that's what I was clarifying.
Right, but that catalog is also very expensive, and I think that that could be done without, you know... I kind of thought about the same thing that you did, and then I think somebody else, I think it was Pearson. Dr. Pearson said the same thing. Wasn't that what you thought as well, Alyssa?
Sorry, Dr. Flores, can you clarify?
Well, weren't you kind of also critical of number four?
I think number four...
I'm sorry, not number four, number three. Weren't you critical of number three?
I think number three fills... There's been a lot of talk about the need for number three and plans for the need for number three over probably the last eight years. It's been a conversation that's been going on in our state. So I think it's been an ongoing idea and probably just a little more prevalent or even more useful in this time, when you have more kids and families looking at remote.
Well, I think it's a lot of money for what it does. And if you think it's needed, well, I thought all of it sort of was needed, but... I think it could be combined. I think that the project could have four parts. I mean, we certainly do need the training for teachers, and I'm very concerned that we include the number two for our vulnerable students out in rural areas and along the Front Range, where we have a large number of minority kids. I think that definitely should be part of it. And I also think that we do need to train teachers, and now that I've gotten a better idea of the... That these are not coherent parts in classes and all, I do think there's textbooks, better textbooks now, that do follow. I'm concerned about content, and I think if we had the content in a way that the... That we have our... Well, that we have our... What do you call it? It's not a curriculum. It's the standards. That would be easier. I just wish we had worked harder on getting, you know, those publishers to get out good-quality stuff out there. And anyways, I just think that that could be done. But I also think that we can't waste this summer. I mean, this summer is too precious, especially for those kids that have not had anything. And I think that, at least for the month of June, we should have been doing, number one, at least training teachers, and then getting everybody on board to start school in September. I think we need to start... We need to have this time for planning and also the time to start school, definitely in August or September, and especially for the younger kids, because I think they're less at risk. And I've been reading about other countries where their kids are going to school already, and these are countries that, you know, have gone through similar problems that we've had with COVID-19. So I think younger children, from what I've read. And I have a friend... My doctor has a brother who worked for the NHIE or that, and I think we should bring him in to come give us information, and he's working on this. And I really do believe that our kids need to go to school.
Thank you.
That's the best way.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Flores. Board Member Durham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think just looking at these, I think maybe the simpler might be the easiest, and teacher training might be the easiest to implement. And just based on the anecdotal conversations I've had, that there's a lot of ground to try and make up, trying to get the majority of teachers who are not used to instruction up to speed, and that might be the simplest implement and perhaps the most valuable. So I think that was the number one makes some sense to me on that basis.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, Madam.
Thanks. Board Member Rankin?
Could we make number one and number two?
Board Member Flores, could you just wait, please? Let's just let everyone have a shot at, please. Board Member Rankin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to go back to the amount of money for these grants, and the first one says, "Private donations of $438,000." Maybe when whoever put this grant forward figured that out, they knew where they were gonna get that money. But I would question a call for grants if that one won, that where's everybody gonna get that extra half a million dollars? So that was kind of a question of mine. My thought on the teacher, I really felt a lot of... I think three out of four emphasized teacher training, and having taught computers, it isn't something that we can say, okay, we've got this summer, we've got to throw all these teachers into online coursework or going... I guess it'd have to be online if we're still staying home, and expect them to have the knowledge necessary to teach remotely. This is something that not only does a teacher need background on, the students do also. I'm getting an echo, and I hope it's not me. I'm not quite sure how to handle that. I don't know if you're getting it, but... So that's the first one. The third one I did like. I like the idea of having online courses in one catalog that anyone can access. It could be parents. It could be teachers. It could be anyone. And I think there are a lot of parents. If we're gonna do remote learning and online, they're gonna need some kind of training in order to help their child. So I think with our... If I can just direct it to number three, that would be my choice right now, because I do believe our BOCs and our empowered learning, which is in class, it can be... You can do it in class. You can do a lot of things for students that don't have access to teachers of advanced placement courses. They can do that remotely. And I think there would be more possibility... courses. They can do that remotely. And I think there would be more possibility of reaching more students if we organized what we already have, the empowered learning, and have that grant put into that area. We could take the coursework that they are already using. And I know they're doing a lot, um, uh Dan Morris is doing a lot in my district for exactly what I think this grant is. It's just perfect for it. We can take what we have and then build on it. And then after three years, it's a $10 million grant, it's not the whole thing, but after three years, we would have the organization of of work that we could build out further on down the line because A, we don't know what is going to happen in the future with viruses. We know what we have now, but we cannot handle it now. And we know it is, it did not work uh it during this last um go around. And I I thought because students had computers and they had them in the classes or in the schools, I should say, that that we'd be further along than we were when this happened. And I find we're way far behind where we should be. But it's not something we can do with some teacher training, short courses they can take. And there's one that has a lot of coursework teachers can do. And I I would like to say to these teachers, as if you don't have enough to do trying to teach the kids, you also have to take extra coursework in understanding how to do it. I I think it's just overwhelming. And I think that needs a lot more thought than the other three um proposals. And I'm sorry I took so much time, but that's where I'm coming from. And I have taught computers, basic skills to adults. And I know our teachers are probably further along because um they know how to do email and some things. But I think you take the the lowest level of a teacher's knowledge of imparting the uh curriculum through computer work is way different from teachers that are already doing it in the classroom and have done advanced coursework and empowered learning. So that's where I am on these grants.
Thank you. Board Member McCollum?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yes, I wanna thank um Board Member Rankin for bringing up the reliance on donations. I noticed the same thing and was wondering about that as well. Um, there are none of these options that don't contain something that we could do good things with. Um, but I can't help but wanna go back to um the financial question. And um I apologize if this was in here somewhere and I missed it, but what happens if we go for one of the more ambitious grants and we don't get the whole thing? Um, are we allowed to ask for the maximum that we think we have any shot at getting and then have the most robust version of whichever one of these programs we think could do the most good? Or do we have to kind of marry ourselves to one of these programs and then we either get the money or we don't? Is it a totally binary question? Or can we ask for greatest generosity we think we can get and then make the program robust to match? And I apologize if I should already have known this, but it would help me to have staff speak to that uh because we are facing such great need here in Colorado. I'd like us to not leave it on the table. If we have a shot at getting a really generous grant, I'd like us to to put our hat in the ring and try to get it. Um, and then if it's the case that if we don't get the most generous grant, that we can scale back and try to work with what we do get, um, how does that work? Where does that leave us standing and and how does that affect our strategizing as we go forward as a board, telling staff what to ask for? I'd like to ask for as much as we think we have a shot at getting and then go from there. And I also, um, option three does sound good as well as option four, but I um there are none that I would object terribly to. I just wanna make sure we're not leaving resources on the table that we might have had a shot at getting. And I would love to have staff input as to what they feel is feasible for them to implement because I know that you all are in touch with um superintendents across the entire state. And so your take may be a little bit different and I would value knowing which of these programs might have popped up in the minds of our staff members who will be on the front lines helping us make the most of of one of these should we get the funding. Thank you.
Ms. Pearson?
Thank you. Um, Board Member McCollum, I I used to, I I just wanna clarify your question in terms of budget. Are you saying if we put in multiple ideas to get closer to the total, like that we could apply for?
I'm trying to think. I'm so sorry to interrupt. I was trying to figure out, is this an all or nothing thing? Like, um, if we ask for the cheapest idea, did we just put ourselves on an unnecessarily short leash simply because we liked one concept over another? Could we ask for more generosity? And then do we have to, I feel like we're picking two very different levers. How much help we'd like to get in the form of grant funding and what kind of concepts we wanna use it for. And I'd like to ask for as much help as we think we can get and then use it to the best of our ability. I I feel like I almost don't, if I thought we had a $20 million budget and we were really gonna get it, that might impact which idea I pick. Uh, do, does that make any sense?
It it does. I do not know well enough from the US Department of Ed and Angela may, she's listened to part of the webinars too, if if they're gonna take the amount, the the total budget request into consideration in their decision making. They have, I'm trying to remember, they have points in their rubric, I think for the alignment with the budget and the plan and the reasonable cost, but I don't think they have, if you ask for 3 million versus if you ask for 17 million, I don't think you're getting any different point in what would get awarded to you.
Madam Chair, may I? Can you just wait, please? Board Member Flores, please let her finish.
I I think I may understand. Um, boy, I feel like we're, it's almost like we're shopping for a new computer and they have wildly different budgets as well as different features. My first question is, what's our budget? Are we shopping for a Maserati? Are we shopping for a used Honda? I I kind of, oh, sorry to be so indelicate, but that I can't help but wonder how that affects our our strategy as we go forward, trying to put our hat in the ring. If we ask for the $20 million option, have we increased our odds of getting turned down 100%? I I'll, I think I've stated it clearly enough that others can chew on it, but um there are none that I wildly object to. I just don't wanna leave help on the table while we need so much.
Can I just share one other thing you made me think about in terms of thinking the strategy about getting the grant? I think I said it last week but didn't today. Um, there is a ranking right now of states eligibility and prioritization. Um, with the way the current ranking is that they published and we can give some updated data, but with what they published, um, we're in the bottom 20th percentile of all states. And so that weighs, I think it weighs 40 out of 100 points. I can go look up the exact numbers, but it's a significant amount of how the grant weighs is that prioritization of where our state is. So you just, I should've said that at the beginning, just know that that we're we're a long shot, maybe depending on how many grants go in and for how much money, but we're a little bit of a longer shot, at least just where the where Colorado ranks in priority.
Thank you very much for that insight. Are we correct in guessing that it might mean that we might not wanna go for one of the overly ambitious grant figures? Do do we know? I mean, would that mean that we wanna go for a slightly more frugal option and that might increase our odds of not being told 100% no? I'm sorry if you don't know the answer. I can't help but wonder.
Those are all really good questions.
Okay. I'll stand down for now. Thank you for those insights. Madam Chair, may I, may I?
May I? Just, I will call on you shortly, Dr. Flores, please.
Thank you.
Um, 'cause I believe it's my turn. And I have a question, first of all, and that question is, number two, the the distribution of grants, it seems to me that doesn't quite work with the way these are structured.
Sure.
Can you help me with that? Board Member, I mean, uh, Ms. Pearson?
I get to be a board member today?
I know, I do this to you all the time.
Um, I wish I could help you with it more. Um, I would really like to get some clarification from the US Department of Ed of how this works. Um, but my understanding from what they've sent, my understanding is that the money has to go out through contracts. That's what I understand. But then there's also micro grants as an option, but I think those still go out through contracts. So I don't wanna throw it off the table completely, but but I just, I'm not sure how it works. And it would be nice to get a little bit more clarification from US Department of Ed to clarify for sure.
I was crazy about it anyway, simply because I, it wasn't tight enough for me in terms of the grants. It wasn't clear. And I and I'm also trying to remember that one of the uh requirements is that this would be available, this, whatever gets produced is available to all schools, public and private. So I wanna make sure that we're clear on that. And frankly, number four is the only one of the applications that address the notion that this will be available to all teachers. So I do agree with Board Member Durham that given the immediacy of need we have for our teachers to shift their, or those teachers who are going to teach online, to shift their skill set in some situations rather significantly, that either one or four would be um in in that particular area. What I liked about number four is a couple of things. One, there was an immediate, there was an effort to immediately provide some resources for teachers. The challenge I have with this grant is that by the time year three rolls around, we will still have kids wanting to learn online because we know that we have many families that want online working uh opportunities. And that's important to us to improve overall. But in terms of the crisis that we have right now, four was the one that said, we are gonna get on this immediately in terms of finding some, providing resources for our teachers. I also liked the fact in that one that they were looking for measures of student engagement. I mean, we can't really measure how much kids learn from each of these different things, but the fact that they were putting an emphasis on evaluating their programs based on how engaged students were, I think that's a huge problem that we're addressing, or that we're, I'm sorry, that we're observing, that we've got kids that check out. Uh, traditional, I mean, I don't think many of our teachers are really prepared to engage kids using this different medium. I think it's been really hard and I would be hopeful that whatever we pick, it will get on that particular, that particular need that we see. So that's one of the reasons that, I mean, one and four would be my highest priorities. I uh lean toward four simply because of the fact that it was so, I don't know, sophisticated in the way it was put together and that it concerned um student engagement and immediate help to um students. Number three also appeals to me simply because that might be a statewide need that we have, again, because we are going to have online learning in Colorado post pandemic as well. And if if this is, if this can't be met with this grant, where can it be met so that we can get to this point? I think we can really improve our online options for folks. Those are my comments. Board Member Flores, did you have some more comments?
Uh.
Board Member Flores?
Hey, I was muted. I'm sorry. I just kept talking along. Thank you for letting me speak, Madam Chair. I was just thinking that, um, I do agree that teachers need to be trained, but I also agree that we need to be sensitive to that 35% of of kids that are not getting anything. And I'm talking about the kids at home. I'm thinking about technology at home. I'm thinking about kids along the front range uh who do not, who are poor, cannot afford it, who don't have the technology know-how at home and don't have anybody to help them. I'm talking about kids that are rural and who may not have access, um, may not have the power of to, for their computers to show, you know, pictures and that they get it through just uh hearing, if at all. So I'm worried that we do not, you know, uh do not say, well, these kids don't matter. Not that we don't, that we would think that, but I think they do matter. And those are the kids I'm really worried about that haven't gotten anything uh during this period of time. And we'll go on getting um hardly any education during the, you know, near future. In fact, I really believe that those kids are the ones that should be going to school and the kids with a technological know-how maybe wanna stay at home with their parents who can who can help them. And uh and so if a third, we can deal, schools can deal with a third of the most culturally vul- vulnerable. But uh, you know, if we had a, and then the others could do the on online. But I also think of a communitarian project where the whole community gets involved. And that really kind of, my heart goes out to number two. Number two is important. And since, I wish I had read the RFP. I really wish we had been given the RFP. And um I would have gotten a better sense of what. But we did choose number one number and all of these kind of kind of coalesce. And we could write something that um has a mixture of the teachers with uh the communitarian project where uh the communities are involved as well as number two, I think tries to do. So, and we wouldn't be out uh out of balance because, I mean, we did choose one that in, that is all encompassing. And um so I hope we don't, we don't take that communitarian uh part out of it. And I think number two kind of addresses that.
Thank you, Board Member Flores. Board Member Shuffel?
Is our task to rank, order these or to come together around consensus?
Thank you for saying that because that's the next step. So you've introduced that notion.
All right.
Unless there are other questions of staff that that we have, that colleagues have. Does anybody else have a question of staff? Board Member Rankin?
Okay, thank you. Um, when we started out, we said the uh grants are three year grants. And number four, I have a 6.5 million over five years. I mean, if if the details are are different, the proposal was supposed to have, I'm real concerned about that. I mean, attention to detail in this kind of um.
Application, yeah.
Really important. So that was in proposal number four. So they're two years over what they wanted. Also, if you look at the the second, the second proposal, uh their budget was 20 million. So.
That could be cut.
To Board Member McCollum's point, they not only asked for everything, 19 million was for remote learning collective funding request. And then there was 900,000 million for administrative overhead. Now, you're gonna say, Board Member Rankin, that's impossible. Well, you just look at it. That's what they wrote down there. And I know they made a mistake. But I I mean, this is, and I think the community, that thing sounds really good. And there are some communities that have this sort of program in place. And what it is, is collecting everything that goes into education and seeing what you have in the community and how it will work. And I I have one uh community that is very active in this kind of thing. And I think it's good, but I think it's a huge undertaking and I'm not quite sure it deals with what remote learning is and what we're dealing with here. Um, what we really wanna do, in my opinion, by combining all these, I think that would be wonderful, but it would take a lot more time and a lot more money. And uh jumping in on educating teachers right now during the summer on what it's gonna take, it's gonna take more than a summer. These these courses that were um on some of these, it's a short course creation. We're gonna have CDE or some people make these short courses so teachers can learn right away. It, computer, learning computers is not that easy. If it was, the teachers would all be trained. We're gonna have to go back, as we did at the last board meeting, and look at our higher ed. I mean, our teachers now gonna come out of college, they should basically have this knowledge 'cause we do not know when this next one's gonna hit, when remote learning is gonna take over. So, and it also, a lot of it is the future. I know, I know it's not the best way to teach right now because not everybody is on board with it, but I I I'm not sure three years we can be up to speed. And I'm sorry for taking so much time, but but that's why I would go with number three myself, uh just because we have a start on that and we've got a start somewhere. And some of the courses that we could have in this are gonna help teachers um learn how to work computers, I mean, and teach with them. And that that's a huge undertaking. Thank you.
Sure. Any other comments before we do a ranking, colleagues?
I have a question.
Board Member Durham, go ahead.
Is there any that, are we, are we limited to making, submitting one grant proposal or could we submit more than one? or could we submit more than one?
Ms. Pearson?
Thank you. We can submit one application as the department, but I, I haven't read anywhere that said it couldn't include multiple ideas. Might make, put us over the edge a little bit, but we can make it work. So it would need to go in as one whole package, but we could put a few ideas in there, I think.
So these are all, by the, by the way, these are all different applicators, right? Different, different folks have applied for these.
They're all different ideas that were submitted.
Remember, they're ideas. May I add something?
Could you just let her answer the question, Board Member Flores, please?
I, it's just that I muted, and I, I can't hear.
You can't hear?
When I mute and open, I, there's, I miss, I miss things. I can't see people talking. I can't see people putting their hands up. I'm sorry. I'm doing the best that I can. But I do, I do want to speak.
I will call on you in just a moment. Could you please finish the thought, Ms. Pearson?
Thank you. I'm not trying to interrupt.
Trying to get my, where I was train of thought back. We were talking about...
And I asked the question, they're all different organizations, or people, or something? They're not, they're not, there's not one applicant for two of these proposals, for example?
They're all, they're all unique ideas. They were submitted by different individuals.
Okay.
And I think the other important thing to remember is, just because somebody submitted it, that doesn't mean that they'll implement it. And it doesn't mean that it needs to be exactly like that. Like, as we put in our application to the U.S. Department of Ed, we'd probably adjust to make sure it's meeting the application requirement. If we got awarded, we'd have to write it up and probably more specifically for the procurement process for the state, too. So these things all, they'll get adjusted a little bit and clarified as we go through these processes. And then when we do the procurement process, it will be open to anybody to apply for implementing that idea.
Thank you. Board Member Flores, go ahead.
Well, I think that, I mean, the ideas were given. They were ideas for the department to work with. And so, I mean, I like the idea. I like number one. And I like, and I guess everybody likes number three. So, I mean, number one costs 1,438,000, and this one is 17,000. Number three is 17,000. So why not combine that, and then add a little bit for number two? Think about the communitarian idea. And I think that could be in there as well, part of it. And so, yeah, I mean, I like the first three ideas. Now that it's number three has been explained. And so I think it could work.
Board Member Flores, could you rank?
I wish we could. Number four?
No. Could you please rank the four options, one, two, three, and four, but put them in rank order? Whichever one is your number one choice, number two choice, number, right now?
Is it possible to, to read the RFP? I'd love to read the RFP for, for this.
That's probably not possible anymore. Because we would like to get this decision made. Staff has a very short time span to, to...
So, so you're asking me to rank it right now? I will.
Yes, please. Oh, wait a minute.
Mr. Durham, what's your, what? So, the, number two really go for about as much money as we could hope to get. And I think as long as we're going to go through this process, that moves that one up, at least in my estimation.
Moves it up? Moves it where?
A lot of work, probably the same amount of work for, and I think we have to give that one some thought. And if we could apply to more, if we could actually marry one and two, it might, might get to a couple of the issues. So I, I just, I think we ought to think about the amount of effort to get $3 million as opposed to the amount of effort to have what I think might be a better shot of getting 20 million if we're a little bit more innovative.
Well, there are a couple of ways to get 20 million dollars, get to 20 million dollars, too. Board Member Flores, can you rank for us? Have you ranked?
Yes. Okay, I will go, I will go one and two. I will go one, first of all. One, and I think that two could be much less money. But I, I would go one and two. And then I would go three and four.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Board Member Shuffle, did you rank them? I think that's what we were asked to do.
Yeah, number two would be my number one, only because it's, it's ambitious, and it includes a lot of options. You know, a parent could hire a tutor, and there's a lot for teachers in there. So I, I like the idea of these collectives. So I guess my number two is my number one. And then I like number three as my next choice. And I wondered if we could put those together. I don't know if it's possible. But the taxonomy thing, I think, is a big benefit to the state as a whole. And I think it would have some longevity that we could build on. A lot of parents, they don't know, I mean, they're, it's inefficient the way they're looking for what's out there. They don't know what's out there, so they spend a lot of time looking. I think having a repository where they could see what's there, what's the quality, an annotation to say, here's what this course, here's how this learning resources can help kids, that'd be a huge service to our states. And then I would say, I don't know, number one would be number three for me, and number four would be number four.
Great, thank you. Board Member Goff?
Madam Chair?
May I go through the line and then come back to you, Board Member Flores, please? Thank you. Board Member Goff?
Thank you. I'm on, right?
Yes, you're on.
Okay, my, my number one is idea two. I, I do agree with the, if we're going to go for the big amount, let's go for it. I really did like that proposal because it's so comprehensive. And I, I agree with Dr. Flores. That one's the one that specifically focused on vulnerable students. And I think we could, I think we could work in a lot of our groups that are really impacted by that. And I like the idea that it, it included examples of a lot of K-12 issues. It wasn't just limited to computer training for teachers. Although, all in all, that is the basic core. We're going to, we're going to have to let our teachers bloom and flourish in this as much as possible, because that will improve the chances for catching up to learning loss. And then number, number two is the number, is idea number one. Number three is idea number four. And number, idea three is number four. And Deb, only because it's, it's not directly at kids and their learning. I think, that's where I came down to. What is the best thing for the students right now? And that's their own engagement and the teacher readiness. So I agree totally. I'd love to, I'd love to be able to say there's a virtual coursework taxonomy, and all these wonderful things are available for people. I just think over the next, three years is a long time to wait for that. And I do think kids, kids and their teachers are kind of, they're in my number one priority slot right now. So.
Thank you. Board Member Durham? Microphone, sir.
Technical about it here. Two, one, three, four.
That was quick. I did. Board Member Rankin, thank you.
I would, I'd agree with Dr. Shuffle. I'd like to combine three and two, but in order would be number three, number two, number one, and number four.
And Board Member McCollum?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to agree with Mr. Durham, two, one, three, four. And I also really want to know if there's somebody in our meeting today with a lot more experience in chasing grant dollars than I have. I liked his concept of stacking them, so that if we ask for something terribly ambitious, you don't get what you don't ask for. So I want to ask for as much as we have a prayer of getting. But I don't want it to be a binary yes or no. So if we can kind of Scotch-tape them and rank them, and I don't know whether it's wise for us to put any kind of asterisks in there, like if you're not going to give us the whole 20 million, would you consider 15? How about 10? I don't know if that's counterproductive strategically, but I would be interested in the input of our professional grant administrators, if they have a take as to what is the most strategic way to roll this forward. But if we can say, if you say no to this, would you please consider this in second position? If that's something we can do, I'm interested in hearing more about that concept, because I just want us to get the best that we can, and we won't get what we don't ask for. Thanks.
Thank you. So I think mine would be three, four, one, two. I also am really worried that two doesn't align with the rules. So I'm...
Oh, it does.
Well, that's going to be up to the department, to Department of Education, not us to decide.
Madam Chair, I'd like to change mine.
Sure.
Now that I've thought about it.
Sure.
I'd like to go two and one. Two is number one, and one is number two. And I'd like to combine those two, because it, I think if, if we do, that comes up to about 20,000. And we do get the teacher, the teacher training in there, because the first one is just 1, 438,000. The next one is 19 million. And if we could just kind of shorten that a little bit, cut that out, I think we could get the teacher training that we need immediately. And also, we, we get to, we get the vulnerable kids. And I think number two is very important, because those are the kids, the 35% that have not been getting anything, or about that, that amount. And then I would choose, I guess, number three and number four. So two is number one, one is number two, number three is number three, and number four is number four.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Thank you.
So staff, have you tallied our priorities? Ms. Pearson?
Sure. Angela, you confirmed?
Yeah, I'm kind of working on it now. So two is definitely the frontrunner with five people weighing in as that third top priority. One is the runner-up with four, and then I just was getting to three and four. So I don't know if that, you want to start the conversation there?
So, given that, how about a motion?
A motion to what?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, Rebecca?
I'm happy to make one, and I've even got it on my phone here somewhere, the suggested motion. I'll get that up for us in a second. But do we need to also make a decision, or would it be done by amendment with respect to whether we explore the possibility of stacking them, or, or if someone discovers, in staff discovers, that that creates a poison pill, or creates some other kind of problem, that we could reconsider that? But we've got that separate decision kind of hanging out there at Mr. Durham's suggestion. And I agree with him that I'd like to see some stacking, so we don't just get a hard no in the event that we ask for the most ambitious option, and they don't give us 20 million since we're in the bottom 20% of consideration. Do we want to kind of massage that first, or do you want me to look for that suggested motion and get it out there first?
Ms. Pearson?
I think we could write for number two, I think, and say, look, we could use 20 million. We can do more remote learning, learning, I'm going to say, remote learning collectives. Or you could have fewer remote learning collectives with 10 million. So I think we can maybe put a range in if you wanted to just go with one idea. What I would ask you all, I think, is if we can get clarification from the U.S. Department of Ed, if they say two won't work, just if, if they do, and we can get that clarification soon, would you, I would love direction from you all if you would like us to do something else, if you vote for number two, if that's where this is headed. Just so we could have that idea of what you would like us to do in that situation.
And Ms. Pearson, you need to get that answer almost immediately, right? Because there's so little time now to actually fulfill the, so this time, rather than getting something in writing, or maybe instead of the general question, very specifically...
Yes. Now that we have the idea in front of us.
Now that you have the idea clarified, and then say yes and no. So would, should, are you suggesting that we come up with a second choice?
If you all would like us to submit something else besides number two, or if you want us to stack number two, drop that and put something else in there, we could do that, too. But it would be, I think it'd be easier, since we have so little time, just to get your direction today of what you would do in the event that number, if you vote for number two, and number two is not allowable, what you would like us to do, and not to change.
May I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Isn't it, isn't it the case that once you're in the midst of this submission, oftentimes the U.S. Department of Ed will give guidance and say, these are the things we want to fund. And you might need some discretion to say, these are three, four ideas, they're all helpful. And maybe we need to give you discretion in your conversation with them to say, we have four great ideas, the board supports all of them, this tends to be our priority. But if, if this isn't something that aligns with what you want to fund, then I'd like you to have discretion being in that negotiation with them, and then advise us.
If we can get ahold of somebody at the U.S. Department of Ed to help us think through that, that would be wonderful. And it, that's a great suggestion. And I appreciate the flexibility you shared there. Thank you.
So I think you get the rank order?
Yep.
Of our priorities? Am I correct?
I think, we, we're close, because we've got, so two is clearly your top priority as a whole.
Right.
But then you've got two votes for number three in first place, and one vote for number three in second place. Those, three could be like the next runner-up. But you also have four votes for number one in second place. So if you guys have a strong preference between three and one, if number two doesn't work, that might be nice direction.
Colleagues, can we do that? Madam Chair?
Scored on...
Board Member Durham, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think those are scored on a regular basis. It would show two, then three, stack those two together, stack two and three, and see where we can get. Because I like the idea of having a little multiple out there.
Could you say that again, because I sure missed it?
Well, I mean, I, depending on how many points you decide, assign the first, second, and third, and fourth. But if you have, number three had three first place, is that right?
Number three had two first places. Sorry. Steve, I was doing the fingers up. Yeah, two first places and one second place.
And what, one?
And then one had four second places.
And rank orders, they're pretty close, but I, I would, I would think there's a good chance for, I think, which two, in your opinion, are most easily married, Ms. Pearson, Dr. Pearson?
I'm no doctor. You guys don't need to give me doctors. Very generous. A lot of money you just assigned, gave me.
Is that me, you raise, or what?
Yeah, don't give her a doctor. I don't have money. I don't have money to give her a raise.
You just gave me a promotion here. You can just call me. Sorry, I just, again, lost my train of thought. You would...
Which, is it easier to marry two with three, or two with one, in terms of trying to, in having a coherent proposal?
I think we could do either there. I think two, if we do two with anything else, we're going to get a need to lower two, because it's right at the max of the 20 million dollars right now.
So it would be two and one.
So we could do three and one, or we could lower two and do two and one, or two and three. I think they're all different ideas. One and four are the most similar of ideas. You could write them as one thing if you wanted to. But if you're going to pull any of those others together, I think they're all unique. I don't think it makes a difference.
Yeah.
Just a minute, Ms. Flores, just a minute. Go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Durham?
We do three, two.
I didn't, I didn't hear you, Steve.
That's it. I'd move that we do two and three together. It's just to give them guidance for trying to put, put together a proposal.
And just to be clear, when you guys are saying stacking, I just want to be sure I know what stacking means. You're saying that we write one proposal with two ideas, and we're essentially asking them to fund both of those ideas, or... Or, I'm seeing Board Member McClellan, or we put an asterisk in there saying, if there's flexibility, you could fund one or the other, or both? Is that what?
Yes.
May I clarify what I was thinking?
That's correct.
Board Member McClellan, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My concept was, if we're going to get a hard binary no to that first aggressive ask of 20 million dollars for option two, my hope would be then, if you're not going to give us that, here's our second choice. That's what I meant by stack. I don't know that it can be written in that way, but it was almost like an insurance policy, like, well, if we're going to ask for the aggressive one, can we give them something they can give us if they're going to say no to the aggressive one? I'm not quite sure the best way of handling that. That was my thought, though.
Okay. Thanks, Board Member McClellan. And I just, from my experience in writing federal grants before and others, I'm not sure that's possible because they have a peer review process. And like, I mean, you get your idea, you know, and that's what, that's what you get. So, I think the, the better approach, if you wanted to include two ideas and hope that some would get funded, we would, we would kind of write them together. Um, because I don't think they're going to say, okay, we don't like idea one, so now we're going to go to your idea two. Because if all 50 states did that, there would be like, everybody would be writing in insurance policies, and there would be no way to review them. Um, so they just need to review what is submitted and make a decision.
Well, in, in that case, Katie, is it, is it best to just roll the dice on two? And, and, and note that, you know, it could be, we could, what could be accomplished with a little less?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be easiest. Um, and it would, it would allow us time to build the best proposal for one idea because we would be focused on that. Um, the only, the only caveat I would say is if we do get clarification from the U.S. Department of Ed, that that's a not allowable, and, and we can't figure out a way to tweak the idea. Um, then we would go to your number two choice, which I think is number three or something, or number two, I'm not sure.
It's either one or three, Commissioner. It's either one or three, I believe. Is that correct, Ms. Pearson?
Points the way I've used these, uh, category rankings work, because the first place counts for a lot, so.
But number two is number one. This is Val, and you, you could say you were going to let-
We know that, we know that. We, we understand that that's, that's number one.
Yeah, I know, but you were going to let me speak.
Well, please go ahead, let's get this-
May I?
Sorry, Mr. Durham, you better just concede this one.
All right.
Board Member Flores, please speak.
Yes, I think Steve is kind of along with me that number two should be number one, and number one should be number two, and they should be combined, and they can be. I can see it easily being combined. Or, I mean, a, a graduate student could do number three. Come on. I'll get a graduate student and work on it. I am graduate faculty at the University of Colorado Boulder, I mean, uh, Denver. So, we could do that.
Um, let's get back to first-
Or a bunch of graduate students. The other thing I wanted to say is that we can get Gardner and Bennett. They're the people that are going to, you're going to have to invite those people to help us. And, and, you know, I mean, it is political. And so not only do people read it and, and, but ultimately, they have a big say in it as well.
Board Member Flores-
So, let's not forget about that.
Board Member Flores, I think we're trying to figure out what is our first choice. Our first choice is number two. It takes up all the, it takes up pretty much all of the 20 million that's recommended. We will try-
Right, but it also, we could also add number one because number one is so important. And it's 1.4 million, and I'm sure that we could get, you know, the 400 million taken away from number two so that it could be two. And they're not separate. We do need teacher training, and we do need, uh, uh, number two to, to help those 35% of kids who are not getting anything, those vulnerable kids.
So, Board Member Flores, what we're talking about right now is in the event that number two does not follow the guidelines from the Department of Education, where does the board come down in terms of its second choice?
Even right now, we could even call, I mean, somebody can get Bennett and somebody can get Gardner to, to-
That's not-
If it's a department. Can get that answer right now.
Thank you, Board Member Flores. Guys, can we come up with, is number one?
And, uh, I, our Board Member, uh, Schroder, uh, Board Member Goff has a question. Board Member Goff has a question. She has her little hand up.
I know. I'm just trying to get us to that point.
Thank you. I guess I'd, I'd ask staff, um, what, what kind of tweaking would you see would be necessary in order to be as secure as possible that we're meeting the guidelines? If, uh, number two specifically, what kinds of weaknesses does that have that could jeopardize this? Um, unless it's, I don't, I'll say "tome down" in quotes, or less sub-grant looking, or something like that? But I just wondered what your honest, honest take on what number two is lacking, or has too much of, that could cause us to be disappointed?
Ms. Pearson?
The concern I see with number two is that, um, the nonprofit that we would contract with would then be doing grants out. Um, I think, this is where we need some clarification, if we had that nonprofit contracting with different entities to provide those, um, remote learning collectives to support those, then I think that meets the requirements of the grant, as I understand them. And this is not my background, so I, I'm trying to make sense of the, the language from the U.S. Department of Ed and the direction we've got from our procurement staff. So, that might be a way to do it, is if the nonprofit then subcontract, or sub-subcontract with the collective. Um, but I think grant idea is what the, that's what the concern is about being allowable.
Ms. Pearson, I think that's an easy fix. I think, because the difference between contracting and sub-grant is pretty small, and it, there's, there's a little bit of accountability questions and supervision questions. But I would, I would suspect that we could easily monitor the process, make sure it, whatever U.S. standard it needed to meet. So, I, I think we ought to work hard and submit two, and if we, if we just flag, and, and with that change, that we're going to force it to contracting. And, and if that's the only objection, it ought to pass mustard, and if for some reason it doesn't, uh, let's just take a vote on whether the second choice is three or one and move on.
I agree. Can we do that, colleagues? Uh, Board Member McClellan, what is your second choice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, option number one is my second choice.
Great. Ms. Shuffel? Dr. Shuffel?
Uh, option number three is my second choice.
Board Member Rankin?
Three. Or, yeah, three.
Board Member Durham?
Three.
Pardon?
Two.
Three? No, I, I just-
Three. Sorry.
Board Member Goff?
Uh, one.
Board Member Flores?
One.
Sorry to break the tie, I go for three.
So, we're going to combine two and three?
No, no, we're not combining. We're, we're applying for two, and should there be a roadblock to two? By the way, have we run these past the governor? Because the governor has to sign off on these as well.
No, we have not. Um, but, but we can, we can get them there.
Okay. So, we're going to apply number two? And then if you get information, and I hope you can prevail in getting an answer really fast so that you all, I mean, we have 10 days maybe, or something like that, if you include weekends, which feels pretty unfair, and it's a very short time period. So, could you get back to us? Ms. Pearson, and let us know when you do get some, or Commissioner, I can't remember, I'm not sure who, who ought to make the, make the ask. So, the motion is, what? We need to vote?
I think, I think we did.
Well, we did, but let's be formal about it in terms of recording it.
So, make the motion for option two.
I can do that, I've got the formal, um, motion in front of me. Would you like me to do that now?
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize Colorado Department of Education to write the Education Stabilization Fund Rethink K-12 Education Models ESFREM grant focusing on idea number two with direction to staff, um, to move to option three in the event that option two, uh, is problematic.
I think that's a proper motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Marombo, would you call the roll, please?
Board Member Durham?
Yes.
Board Member Flores?
I don't like the stacking idea. I think we should combine-
Yes or no? Yes or no, Board Member Flores, please?
I, I don't go for number three.
Board Member Flores-
Because I don't believe, I don't believe that-
Does that mean you're voting no?
No, I'm voting yes on number two.
Then you're voting yes on the motion.
I don't believe in stacking. I don't think that's how the, how they do it in, in Washington.
We're not going to stack, Board Member Flores. We're going to submit for number two. If for some reason number two does not work, we will submit for number three, so that's the most one.
Oh, well, couldn't you just call and ask? If you're, if there's a question about number two, I mean, it's a good idea, and I would imagine that they would be, they would love it.
Board Member Flores, we are going to be calling and asking, um, and we will get back to you, right, as soon as we find out.
Okay. I'll vote for it. But I, I think the smarter one is to combine, take one and add, um, take idea number two and add one to it. And it could be easily done.
Board Member Goff?
Yes.
Board Member McClellan?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
Yes.
Board Member Shuffel?
Yes.
Board Member Schroder?
Yes.
That passes seven zero.
Thank you, folks. We will look forward to hearing back from staff, and we will stand in adjournment until July 8.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Good to see you.
Thank you.